We are live, so good morning, everyone. We will call the Athens County Regional Planning Commission meeting to order for May 13th, 2021. We have a quorum of at least 10 members present right now, or excuse me, we have a quorum over nine members present, so quorum has been established. You all should have copies of the agenda and the minutes that were sent by Steve Pearson late afternoon yesterday. Steve will not be present this morning, but he will be following up and taking minutes based on the recording. So if we could just be mindful of that when we're talking, that somebody needs to write down what we all just summarized. The first item on our agenda this morning is the approval of minutes from April 8th, 2021. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes?
Time moved to approve them.
We have a motion from Warren.
Second.
Second from Gary Guzman. All members in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion is approved. And next item on our agenda is swearing in of any guests wishing to speak. Don't believe we have any guests this morning. I don't believe we have any attendees, so we can move on to our next item, which is announcements and updates. And I think we do have one announcement, which is great news for all involved here, is that the Athens County Commissioners have hired a new Athens County Planner, and that is Laura Olbers. Laura, congratulations and welcome.
Thank you.
Laura, your name says Paul Logue, so you might want to...
Oh, sorry.
You're not the only one this morning who's had Paul Logue on there. Laura, I can say on behalf of the Regional Planning Commission, we are very excited to have you on board and looking forward to working with you for hopefully a long time. And Bob, of course, we're grateful for all the work you've provided for the county and for the Regional Planning Commission and the interim, and always appreciate your steady hand as we move forward with planning endeavors around Athens County.
My pleasure.
Laura, do you have anything you'd like to say briefly before we continue forward?
I just want to say that I'm really happy to be in this role, and I too hope to be here for a really long time and provide some consistency to the position for the county. And I'm grateful that Bob is staying close by to kind of mentor me and guide me through the early stages of this.
Great. Well, welcome, Laura. Thank you. And moving forward, next item on our agenda is any new business. I don't believe we have any on the agenda. Is there any new business that anybody needs to bring forward at this time? Very well. Next item on our agenda is old business, and I don't believe we have any old business this morning, but we can move forward with our continuing discussions relating to activities going on in Athens County. And if it's okay, I'd like to jump ahead on that and see if if Jack Pepper's still on the call, if Jack would like to give us any feedback from any updates on the COVID-19 situation. Jack, are you still with us? Okay. Well, we can start. We'll talk about the US 50 corridor sewer expansion project then, see if Jack rejoins. Lenny, do you have any updates on that right now?
Everything's going along. We've got some minor hiccups we're trying to work through with traffic control, things like that, but you're always going to have those with construction projects. The last contractor should be starting in the next week in the first four phases. And Phase Five is contracts are getting ready to be signed for that, so we're looking at engineering for Phases Six and Seven, and hopefully we'll get a contract to reevaluate the engineering on Six and Seven and get that out to bid later yet this year.
Great. Thanks, Lenny. Any additional questions or comments on that item? Okay, we can move forward with electric aggregation this morning. I think Chris and Luke are on the call.
Yeah, a couple of quick things to report. One, I want to celebrate, and I don't want to steal too much of the mayor's thunder, but several of the mayors actually on this call. We just got confirmation from the EPA that Athens, the city of Athens, Athens County, Amesville, and Trimble have all been accepted into the Green Power Partnership, which is going to be a national recognition for them having their power supplied through renewable sources. That's fantastic. We should celebrate that. We also just got pricing updates starting in June, that we refer to your price is going to be 5.64 cents per kilowatt hour for generation for everybody but the city of Athens. City of Athens will be two tenths of a cent higher with the carbon pay, which is now over $76,000 in that account. So you can go to our website anytime and see what their current balance is. We're getting ready to do some public outreach to see where folks want to see that spent, so that's great. There is also an option, if you aren't supportive of the green power, for folks to opt in, to step down from that, and they'll have guaranteed savings from the standard price, and everybody else can be right at parity with the standard price, despite being 100% green of what AP would offer if we weren't aggregated. Lastly, we have some community grants that we just released. I won't steal that thunder because there's several on this call today, but a lot of great things happening there. And we just welcomed in our newest members. We're at 20 members. The latest member to join Sopac is the Muskingham Watershed Conservancy District. So we're happy to have them as well.
Thank you, Luke. Any additional comments on that from anybody? That is great. That is great news on that designation from EPA. So kudos to Mayor Guzman and Mayor Patterson and the folks up in Trimble as well. It's great work. Did you say, you said Athens County as well, Luke, as a...
I did, and that's for the historic usage of green power. Albany also had more recently adopted green power 100%, even prior to being part of Sopac. Going into the next year, though, so the next time we file for that in the fall, everybody in the Sopac bundle will have that designation. So all the rest of the communities that are already part of aggregation will also be part of that here very shortly. So that'd be really great to celebrate.
For sure. Thank you to the Commissioners as well for their leadership on that. Okay, if there's nothing else on that item, we can move on to our next agenda item, Athens County Land Bank.
Yeah, we're just continuing on, you know, doing what we've been doing. One thing that we really need from the community is we need contractors that may be willing to rehab a house. You know, it's easy to tear down these places, but you know, with the cost of construction materials rising, I think it would be great if we could get more people really taking a look at these houses and, you know, looking at would it make sense to make an investment. We've got a lot of houses in Nelsonville, Gloucester, and around the county. So if anybody knows of any contractors, you know, that maybe want to learn a little bit more about that, like let me know, or one of the other board members know, it would be great to save, you know, rehab some houses, hopefully, instead of just tear them all down. Besides that, just more of the same.
Excellent way for someone trying to get into the business to be able to display their work on a wide, county-wide viewpoint, so.
I got a question. So I was looking at the parameters sent out by the feds for the money that's coming down the pipe, and I don't have my sheet in front of me, but I was looking at it. Has anybody looked to see if there's any way we can transfer some of that money to the land bank to get some of these properties either, you know, removed, cleaned up, or rehabed?
Well, I mean, right now, the land bank, we have, we have a good budget. Also, word is from the state that the state is going to put some money into land banks. So I think, you know, unfortunately, like the biggest thing is this things take time and just the whole process of dealing with things. But right now, I think we have plenty of money, and there's more money coming. But you're right, Scott, maybe there are ways to use the ARP money as well.
Chris, could you clarify, are we still moving forward then, or did the questioning of the auditor stop things?
Um, no, things, now, that was primarily about the expedited foreclosure process, which goes through the Board of Revisions, and that has not slowed down, so that's still happening.
Good, all right.
And, yeah, the, you know, the exciting news is there is more money coming from the state, we believe. Several people testified, including Scott Frank up at the State House, and I think that really helps, so.
Thanks, Chris. I don't see Jack Pepper joining our call again. I did, I did send him a quick email to see if he was able to jump back on. So we can, unless any members have any input on the current status with COVID-19 health orders, the situation, we could wait to see if Jack rejoins us. And if that's the case, we can move on to our next agenda item, which is our Planner's Report. Laura, do you have anything to share this morning? Any updates?
I do. So in regards to the Chancy to Athens Bike Way Connection, Ohio Department of Transportation's Office of Geotechnical Engineering reviewed the plans that were made, and they raised some concerns with the reinforcement on the slopes for that. So they kind of changed what we needed to do, and we need to have a retaining wall with rigid facing. So this is going to further delay the project and also increase the cost to about a little under $200,000 more. But we're hoping that there's possible TAP funding available for that. So we're, we're still pushing through and working on it. And the Athens County Together program is live on our website, and I will start reaching out to the different communities after our Community Improvement Challenge, and hopefully get that rolling. It's been approved by the Commissioners for funding for this year. Some changes have been made to prior years, but it's, it's up there. And then in regards to our Savannah Park kayak access point, we're just waiting and, you know, muddling through some bureaucracy regarding hazard mitigation. So we're hoping to get that finalized pretty soon, as long as Ohio EPA and US Army Corps of Engineers gives us the good green light to start construction on that. So I don't know if Bob has any additional updates that I haven't mentioned.
No, that, that pretty well covers it, Laura. The only thing I'd add about the Guysville canoe access is because we're putting fill material in waters of the state to build the ramp, where, you know, we have to put a little bit of riprap in the river, that will have to be mitigated through the EPA process, and that's kind of what we're waiting for. We put out a proposal to the EPA that mitigation be done by the Hocking River Commission in the form of tree planting in the watershed, and they seem to like that idea. So then it's just a matter of what will the dollar amount be? In ODNR, the grant funder says they will pay for that mitigation, and if bids come in at the engineer's estimate, the way we hope they will, we should have money through the grant to pay for that. So we're waiting on EPA.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you, Laura. Thanks, Bob. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Laura? Great. Okay, thanks, Laura. Our next item on our agenda is our City Village Township and Organizational Reports. Let's see, I did get word back that Jack Pepper's having a difficult time with his audio visual on his end. I think he's trying to connect but isn't having much luck. So we will, we'll continue forward. I'll just kind of work around the screen. So I'll, I'll on Greg Andrews first. Greg, do you have any updates out in Waterloo?
Business as usual.
Thanks, Greg. Warren, do you have any questions, comments?
I guess everyone's aware that 682 is being resurfaced in a total nightmare to try and get through town. So if you can go around, go around. Anyone's guess on what the state's plan is for going forward after that? I see that they have put in some of the sidewalk sloping at the Elm Street area, even though they said they weren't putting in a crosswalk, it appears they have put in the curbing for it. So I don't know if that's in preparation for the Elm Street upgrade. I heard some property owners had requested that old driveway entrances be curved instead of slope because they've changed the entrance, and the workers told them the state didn't put that in the scope, so it wouldn't be done. So, you know, just a lot of unknown with what's really going on and how they're planning to go forward.
Form. And Mayor Patterson? You're on mute, sir.
I have a question for Warren, if I may. Any updates on zoning?
Well, after we had met, the Athens Township Zoning Committee for the Plains totally voted not to move forward with it for reasons of access around the school, overpopulation for that area, for that many more cars to come directly into Connet Road, right at the intersection of the Plains, what's going to be the, not middle school, but whatever they're calling that, fourth through sixth grade level. And it was, the public opposition was really high. I got questioned on why I had voted for it, and my reply has been that, in the three-step process that I understood that we had to go through, if we had turned down the option for the property owner to seek that revision, it was pretty well quashed. I thought that at least should be brought back up, that he have the right to inquire for the change. I totally understand where all the people that just on a 60% approval approve for zoning, and they feel that someone else is now coming in to slap them down, that they are, they have these designated areas. So there, a lot of people are just starting to understand the process. I think the Township Trustees must be feeling the heat of trying to make this decision. I have no idea where they're going on that, but I know the public opinion is overwhelmingly, they do not want it changed. So it's going to be interesting to see how it plays out. And am I wrong in assuming that the process that we went through was the correct process, or that we could have stopped it altogether, that it would not have gone even to step two with the zoning committee had we voted against it?
Warren, I guess if you're asking for my opinion, I can share my opinion. I view what we were doing as not dissimilar to the Planning Commission here in the city of Athens, and the Planning Commission makes a recommendation, and it moves on under our model on to City Council. And City Council makes that determination. It's, I think, very similar to the process to draw a parallel, but and just know that this might be a thin parallel, but with short-term rentals, where Planning Commission took it up. We went through a rather lengthy process, had a lot of citizens come and speak to us. We amended, we voted on it. I think it was four to one. It moved forward to City Council. Now it's in City, has been in City Council's lap for quite some time. And should they choose to pick it up, again, there will be a lot more, likely a lot more city comment, and then they would decide and make it law. So that's my thoughts on the process, Warren.
That's how I viewed it, and I, I still feel every property owner does have the right, and I think once it steps through the process, when the opposition is, is then clarified, and if it's justified, then that should be, you know, what is the driving decider. There was also a question, I'm trying to think now. Oh, that there was no former, formal offer again on the property, so why was it even brought up? And, you know, again, it has to be for clarification that he even had the option to do it. A lot of people were opposed, thinking that, you know, not knowing that even if something is interested in, what is it? How's it to be developed? And giving a blanket approval wasn't the proper thing to do. And I can understand that questioning as well. So I view this first one as really a baby steps on getting something going forward to how it's all going to roll out. And I know that there's a lot of challenges ahead for this zoning area, and I guess sensitivity needs to be aware of what it is and how it is and things like that going forward for all of our parts.
And Warren, this, Bob Eichenberg, I can weigh in a little, having been involved in the process as a consultant for the Zoning Commission and the Township Trustees. I thought the process worked very well, and the Planning Commission really did exactly what it was supposed to. Not a deep dive, in-depth look, but just kind of a broad overview, and the people ultimately decide as they, as it sounds like they wade in. Also, every property owner has the constitutional right to a hearing, and so, you know, there's no getting around that, and there shouldn't be. And so the property owner had a hearing, and then the chips fell where they did. So I thought the process worked.
And it's going to be interesting to see what the Township Trustees vote now. They've heard that. And I think some of them are under the aspect, well, because the Planning Commission approved it, we have to. And I don't view that as the correct method at all. And that's what maybe they need help sorting out before they have their final vote.
I don't disagree with that at all, Warren. I, I agree. I mean, they have the ability to deny, much like City Council could sit there and say, no, we don't want short-term rentals, or no, we don't want this part of the city rezoned to whatever. You know, I guess another, a good example of rezoning is where we rezoned down by Athens Mold machine off Stimson, to where we rezoned a port of the city, which was B3 or B something to M for manufacturing. And council could have denied that.
So I think, I think we're in a learning process, especially for the public, and maybe for some of the elected officials as well. But I do believe we acted correctly with allowing the property owner to have his, his request looked at. So I hope that we can help get that word out too, so that there's not any misunderstanding of what was taking place and how it was being done. I think some local people think that it was shortchanging and still a certain group is trying to rule what can be done where, and override what the local interest is. And that's not the case, but it's hard to get it explained to people that are new to this and don't totally understand the process.
You know, if the voting members of the Planning Commission, Regional Planning Commission are okay with me reaching out to Steve Pearson and kind of talking him through this, I'd be more than happy to do that.
I believe the Township Trustees, I believe they did have a public hearing on Tuesday evening. I'm not sure how that went, but to Warren's point, yeah, I know that there's been, there's a lot of community members in the Plains who are in that, in the mapped area, who spoke out against it. I don't know if anybody was in support of it, but I think that's exciting. There's, it's great to see that bottom line, considering that the Plains has been without zoning forever. And then to quickly get on board with the concept of zoning and then start really scrutinizing what type of development might occur in their community, I thought that was really great. I did sit in on one of the hearings, and I thought a lot of the community members had really great points and concerns and all of that. And that's, that's all part of the process, of course, is from our end, we're not required to have, I don't think it says anywhere about a public hearing or anything, so we're really having just a discussion about whether it's those parents, like you said, Warren. And then it goes to that public comment to better understand how people think it might impact them and what concerns they have as people who live right around it, or those things. And so it's really great to see they're discussing, do we have adequate sewer? Do we have adequate water lines? Do we have, can the road handle it? All of those questions are, are the whole, one of the big reasons why we say we need to be looking at zoning. So I thought that was great. Looked to me like the county or the Township Trustees really did understand their role in it, of course. Steve Pearson did send an email yesterday on some other matters relating to the zoning that the county, the Prosecutor's Office, let me see if I can pull it up really quick here. There was a question about items, things that could, were they considered grandfathered in or not? And one of the items was things like RVs and trailers being parked on gravel or grass. And the County Prosecutor's Office said that those are not grandfathered in, and the zoning code says that they need to be, I think, on pavement or a paved surface. And so there is a question of how do they, now they have to start enforcing those things, of course, and who's going to be on that role of enforcement. So I think the Township Trustees, the Athens Township Trustees are looking, are talking about the possibility of needing some sort of an administrator to assist with these items.
Right.
It's all good, and there's going to be a learning curve. We're, we're figuring out our role in this as well. We, I think when all of this happened, and even to the point where the zoning was established in the Plains, I don't, I can speak for myself and say I was unaware that the Regional Planning Commission would really have a role in zoning changes within that district. And I think we, it should be noted that we will have that responsibility to be participating in this process, as long as zoning is only in portions of the unincorporated areas of Athens County.
Right. So let's just hope that the Trustees now listen to what the public has, has come forward with, with their, you know, with their one-to-one. you know, with their one-to-one as they look at it, they're the decision makers. Let's hope they, they side correctly.
And we'll probably get a few of these, uh, well, at least one or two, I would bet every year, um, probably and maybe even more in the early going. Um, until everybody figures it out more. There might be a little bit more jockeying, property owners who may not have been really watching the process unfold and are unaware that their real estate now has a zoning designation and some of those things might happen. Uh, or new buyers who buy into the, who buy into that area may not be aware that zoning is part of the process now. So.
But kudos to everyone that's, that's stepped up and voiced up and, you know, letting it get the word out and, and hopefully a decision coming down that, you know, like you said, they're making progress.
Mm-hmm. Any, anything else on that item? Mayor Patterson, you have the floor for any updates from the city.
Thank you. Thank you, city planner. Um, just a few items. Uh, the the Stimson Avenue project um, is moving along. I know it's a pain, uh, but it is moving along well. Uh, and just as a reminder to everybody, the businesses along Stimson Avenue are all open. So please frequent them if you're in the area. Uh, the city planner and I have been meeting with uh, some local architects to explore what can be done with the armory. We kind of see a path forward to finally get the armory, at least a portion of it operational again. Um, so that'll, hopefully that'll continue to move forward. The city's microgrid, which is an AEP funded project, uh, funded by AEP as well as SOPAC uh, funding from uh, the Sustainable Ohio Public Energy Council. Uh, there will be a ribbon cutting on June 1st for that project. That, that microgrid is down at the water treatment plant and it is feeding off of the solar array down at the water treatment plant. So this is the second microgrid in the state of Ohio that AEP has uh, developed. The first one was at the Columbus Zoo. There will be a third one up in the Columbus area. So we're fortunate to have one here in Athens, in Athens County. Uh, Athens County Foundation since the beginning of the pandemic had a uh, response fund for COVID-19 related things that where they issued well over a quarter million dollars in small grants for assistance under, uh, due to the pandemic for those in need. We've transitioned to where now we are um, using a lot of what remains in that fund line under the foundation for racial equity efforts um, that are going on in the counties. That's good news. The city's exploring having a designated outdoor refreshment area. Um, or a DORA, which allows people to have open container on the city sidewalks. Uh, if successful, it would only be operational um, the week after graduation or commencement. And it would only be Thursday, Fridays, Saturdays and Sundays between certain times. And then in August, mid-August, before move-in begins, the DORA would be turned off again. Their, their Doras are interesting. You can model them to do, be open during certain times. As I just indicated, uh, some municipalities, I believe there's more than 40 across the state um, that have Doras. The most recent, I believe, is Marietta uh, applied and was granted to DORA. So um, they're, they're used for just attracting people into your downtown or in our case, our uptown area. So more to follow. It has to work its way through city council. It was introduced last Monday, I believe, and uh, we'll go through a process. Um, the last thing to share with everybody, Colonel Andrew Stone is back from deployment. Uh, he has come back to, back home. It is great to have him back safely. Uh, he was serving over in the Middle East um, as the commander of the 16th Engineering Brigade, the whole brigade or the large portion of brigade was deployed over to the Middle East, like I said, and have returned home. So if you see Andy out and about, um, uh, you know, congratulate him on a job well done. You'll see on a lot of our variable message signboards in front of the, the fire department headquarters. And in front of the community center, we are certainly recognizing uh, his service to the country, um, and a safe return, like I said, as well as all of his troops uh, return safely. So that's all I've got, Paul.
Thank you, Mayor.
Hey Paul, it's Jack. Can you hear me?
Yes, Jack.
Well, I'm, I'm having some serious technical difficulties today, but if you want to jump back to COVID, I can give a quick update and hopefully I'll stay on for that one.
Go right ahead if that's okay with everybody else. Go for it, Jack.
Um, so of course, I, I think the big news uh, that, that came out of the governor's office yesterday, sort of twofold. One is that 12 to 15-year-olds are now eligible for Pfizer vaccine. Um, we have a clinic on uh, Saturday and then uh, on Tuesday that are mass action clinics and, and uh, any 12 to 15-year-old that's in.
I think we lost you, Jack.
Uh, I think, I think I can fill in the gap. Pfizer is now authorized for 12 to 15-year-olds. And there's, there is a shock clinic at Heritage Hall this Saturday. It's a walk-in or by appointment.
They're getting vaccinated. Vaccinated. Uh, we ask that they at least attempt to use the scheduling system although the, the, the states.
It's just not the same on Zoom as it is when we're in person for these type of updates. It did look like uh, Governor Dewan is going to lift the health orders on June 2nd. Um, and they're launching a lot of campaigns uh, across the state in order to try to get people vaccinated, including uh, college-age and high seniors to try to incentivize them uh, scholarships and cash payments and things like that. And um, uh, I assume if we check in on the health department's website, uh, there's more information relating to these clinics that Jack was speaking about.
Working off of that is, do you see a date when we're going to come back together in, in a meeting? Or still stay this way until things cool off even more?
You know, that's a good question, Warren. Um, I believe if, if the governor's health orders uh, on change on June 2nd, that allows for um, in-person meetings such as this, we are welcome to have that discussion based on people's comfort level. Um, uh, I would actually defer, um, and I, and I would uh, ask for the county commissioners uh, not necessarily immediately, but to chime in on that because I, my understanding is that uh, the planners, county planners office is no longer at the um, OSU extension office. Laura is now working in the county courthouse. So I'm not even sure if we have uh, what space we have available to us for um, for meetings. Uh, we could look at other spaces. In the past, we've used uh, uh, County Engineer Jeff Maiden's office um, uh, outside of town, or possibly we could look at the community center or city hall or something like that as well.
Um, we could also potentially uh, meet at our new EMS station. Uh, we have a training room in there, which is, I think should fit everybody and it's got video stuff. So if some people wanted to attend, you know, it could be a hybrid location.
Mm-hmm.
So I could, I could.
A good idea.
Yeah.
I could look into that and discuss that with the other commissioners. I, I think it'd be great to get back together again in June, personally.
Well, since, since the question's been asked, does anybody have additional thoughts on that? I'm, I'm open-minded to it.
We can seed about 44 my conference rooms. Up to you guys. I mean, you're welcome. We could do it here. Whatever you guys want to do. I'd like to see that. I, I missed the opening on the EMS building, so it'd be great to see that too, whatever you guys want to do.
If it's okay, maybe, maybe um, uh, I can send out a straw poll or something like that. So uh, um, that people could be a little bit more candid about their, their thoughts or concerns about it. Um, um, but I think at some point, um, whether it's in June or July, we're, we're we're, we're getting back, we're, we're getting back to normal in a lot of ways. Of course, we all, we all can see that and, and that's a good thing. Um, what that new normal is, we don't know. Hybrid, uh, hybrid meetings, that would, uh, that might be some tech, technology we need to work through, but um, something I would imagine uh, our government channel folks at the city have already been working through and um, or at least thinking about. And then uh, we can see what kind of uh, capabilities we would have. Might just be back to the conference call system. Uh, you just dial in if you can't make a meeting or something. But okay, we can start looking at it. Our next meeting would be on um, to Thursday, June 10, I believe. Yeah. So I'll, I'll, I'll uh, reach out to everybody and see to collect some feedback. And I forget who's called, who, who, who was on? Is it Gary Guzman? Are you up? Mayor Guzman? Or is Jack, was on Gary? Yeah, that's your turn, Gary.
Yeah, we, we lost Jack. When Jack comes back, I'll cede the floor. Um, the Amesville Senior Center opened back up this week, um, meeting with uh, state protocols for temperatures and masked until you get to your table, all that kind of stuff. So um, everybody was glad to be back and, and we started loaning out the um, tablets that were provided by the Athens County Public Libraries. So people were glad to have those and get back to a little bit of normalcy. Uh, we are also having a socially-distanced Coonskin Saturday this Saturday night. Music by Steve Zarotti, food booths, um, plant sales, all kinds of stuff. So uh, we're back. We lost the whole year of Coonskin Saturdays, so we're glad to have that back and um, be, it's outside, so it, it's a much safer event, but we'll still follow state protocols. And uh, our council met last night. We had a hybrid. So some people zoomed in and some of the members um, met in council chambers and went over our current slate of information. So um, I, I for one would love to see everybody uh, in person for the regional planning. I, I think that's a great idea. All we need to do is find an adequate space to hold us all. So that's it from here.
Thank you, Gary. Uh, Scott Frank, Nelsonville.
All right. Um, we got a lot going on. So we awarded our uh, regional wastewater treatment plant. Heads up for everybody that went from 12 million to 16 million uh, with everything going on. So that was pretty significant increase for us. Also, we're about to start, we're replacing three main water lines throughout the city and upgrading all the meters. Uh, all but a few will be completely changed out. Uh, I had a appreciate everybody, the different cities who set up uh, fire trucks to cover our city and support with everything. Uh, I know Athens and Logans are quite a bit. And actually all the surrounding departments were here at some point. So we appreciate the help on that. And then a follow-on, I have a question. Uh, it was mentioned to me the other day that maybe the health department will pay for crosswalks? Has anybody heard of that? Guess not. And that is all I got on my list.
Thank you, Scott.
To answer your question, Scott, uh, you might want to reach out to the Creating Healthy Communities Coalition because they work a lot on complete streets and can possibly guide you in the direction of getting crosswalks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Uh, let's see, Jeff Maiden, Jeff, are you with us?
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
Quite all right, Jeff.
Uh, yeah, uh, we um, we have quite a bit going on. I really probably don't need to go through all this. We we um, started doing a tree removal program in December. We removed uh, about a, about over a thousand trees, mostly dead ash trees and oak and some other stuff. Got a lot of stuff marked. I really don't have enough manpower to continue to do that. So we kind of terminated that in, in early March, but um, um, what's real problem? Maybe we removed a thousand trees, maybe we removed 5% of what we have to remove, I'm guessing. We're right now burmining and ditching a lot of roads that we plan on chipping, sealing and paving this year. So we've been focusing on that and culvert replacement. We paved uh, County Road 52 Dela Drives about eight tenths of a mile last week and we're paving uh, County Road 93 Main Street in Millfield today. They're thin asphalt overlays, uh, less than $50,000. Right now, we're working on uh, preparing engineering plans in-house. I've bought uh, four new CAD computers after the ones we have were eight years old. So um, we're working on drawings for a paving project, a chip and seal project. Perry Road Bridge replacement, that was kind of unforeseen, but during a load rating process, we had a bridge that was uh, we didn't know about, didn't have any loads on it or any load limits on it at all. It was reduced to eight tons and I got farmers that um, it's the, the Township Road Perry Road that goes out to uh, out behind Lake Snowden. Um, so it wasn't really on our, every year we find a couple of bridges like this that um, we didn't anticipate. So we're fast-tracking a design and, and uh, we've already ordered a, a 16-foot box culvert to go in there. We'll build that. We'll contract out the box, just the, the fabrication and the setting of the box. We'll build the rest of it ourselves, the foundations and and so forth and backfill. We'll tear it out. I've got all the uh, bridge equipment to do all that. Um, we got two box culvert projects planned this year. And they've been ordered. We're going to build those ourselves. Um, we got a pavement striping project we're working on. All that's in-house. We're designing all that in-house. We got four slip repair projects through FEMA. Since those are a hundred percent paid, uh, we'll contract that out to Buckley. Uh, we helped them get started in that, that, that design work. We review all the drawings and kind of assist with that. We've had traffic control problems with Zayo Group. Man, in the last few weeks, I've had uh, you know, a dozen complaints out there. We've, I've been out there last week, three different nights, I was out there till 6:00, 6:30 where people were texting me. I guess my cell phone's out there, so I'm, I'm getting phone calls and texts myself. So I'll go out there and check it out. And um, what happened was on April the 23rd, they sent the inspector home. And so they've pretty much been no flagman, really no traffic control. Uh, they did the same thing in Fairfield County, Jeremiah up, the county engineer up there shut them down. And um, they pretty much, I talked to him the other day, but uh, uh, so we've got them back on track. I shut them down last Thursday and um, they're back to work yesterday with a full-time inspector. And we're checking on them daily, but we've had some near misses, head-on collisions, that kind of stuff. They were pounding dirt in the middle of the road. So we had one lane on, you know, sharp curves and no traffic control, no flagman, that kind of stuff. So, so that's really taken a lot of time, unnecessary time, I, I guess I would add. Um, let's say, hey, guys, it doesn't have to be this hard, you know? Um, the Johnson Road closure, I've kind of followed that with ODOT. I've really had very little collaboration. I had two meetings last week with District 10 engineers in Marietta. We had a discussion. Other county engineers have had the same problem. Uh, down in Gaya County, they closed State Route 7, ODOT did, for construction, diverted all the traffic like they did on Lavelle Road last year. Onto all these side roads and uh, county roads and township roads and just all kinds of problems down there. Um, and so we're, we're hoping to meet with ODOT, maybe get a, a more collaboration on these projects. Um, have had very little discussion or collaboration on Johnson Road. It's coming out to bid, it looks like. Um, I, we track it in the, in the Ellis system and it looks like they're receiving bids on Johnson Road. Um, I don't have the date in front of me. I was just looking through my email. I got a new computer and new, new emails, so I'm still getting set up, but But, but I sent an email out on that to the Township Trustees and the County Commissioners a couple of weeks ago when I was checking that project out. So it's coming out to bid. It looks like they're going to finish paving State Route 682 in the plains. And then, and so I'm guess, I, I can't remember the dates, but I think it's early fall construction on Johnson Road. And I guess the last thing I got on my note sheet here is, we're dealing with American Electric Power. We got a major transmission rebuild on Armitage Road and County Road 20. So I developed a road user maintenance agreement last week. Sent that out for preliminary approvals. We'll try to get that in the commission meeting probably early next week. But those builds, my experience with those, we've had about $650,000 in settlements with AEP on the damages up in the Nelsonville area. I anticipate that they'll probably, on, on County Road 20, Stroud's Run Road, we're planning on paving that next year. So it's good that it's this year. East Scatter Ridge is also County Road 20. Shelly Sands had two major slip repair drilled shaft jobs there in 2018 and they completely destroyed East Scatter Ridge. As part of that project, it was, it was federal highway emergency and ODOT would not participate in the repair of that road. So we spent about $150,000 grinding out and repairing that road. So I've let AEP know that if they bring all that truck traffic, because they bring triaxial trucks fully loaded with stone, and in Nelsonville, Wolf Bennett Road, about four years ago, they completely destroyed that chip seal road to the point where, where it had to be, we had to base stabilize that road with cement. It's about a $250,000 job. They paid for it. But in the meantime, residents couldn't drive out the road. So, you know, I'm, I'm anticipating problems on County Road 20. They're planning on bringing their traffic through town and trying to avoid that section from Route 690, State Route 690, to the park, to Stroud's Run Park. And I'm coming through town. So I'm mentioning this for the benefit of the, the mayor and, and city officials that are on here, that, you know, working this out, this truck traffic. Because he said they're, they're not trucking as much stone, but when you've got a triaxial truck loaded with 25 ton of limestone, you've got some pretty big, pretty big loads on those tires and it'll really damage your pavements. And I don't feel like, I mean, we've repaired East Scatter Ridge, but I think our, our experience a few years ago, Shelly Sands, when they were trucking all that dirt out, I mean, we had, you know, it was, it was a base stabilized asphalt road with three inches of asphalt. And part of the problem was the amount of, amount of cement we put in that road. I was limited by force account. I can only spend $30,000 per mile. And so that calculated to a certain volume of cement. And we did some testing and we felt like that would be enough for light truck traffic. But when you put triaxial, that, that's the heaviest load you're ever going to get on a road. And so they're, they're going to plan on taking that through town, is what he told me. So that's going to take some coordination on that to go through that subdivision up North Lancaster that way to get into that site. So I plan on having a pre-construction meeting on that. I've told them we want one before they start. And we got a lot of other stuff going on, but that's kind of the, that's the highlights of what we're doing for now.
Thank you, Jeff. Uh, let's see, Athens County Commissioners? Commissioner Schmiehl or Eliason?
Nothing additional from me, Paul.
Thank you, Lenny.
Um, one thing I want to mention is that we have funded a full-time environmental deputy. And I believe it's going to be Deputy Jason Wickman. And he's going to be starting, I think in the next week or so. The sheriff's office, they plan on going to the trustees. And, you know, trying to basically get with elected officials and to, to find, you know, people or locations that are problematic, dumping, burning, various other things. So pretty excited about that. So that's coming up soon. Also, I guess next week, I'm excited that I get to present to this Better Buildings Summit, which is like a national conference. And it's about our EMS station in Athens. And we're receiving an award. And it's, it's through this program they have called Building Envelope Campaign. So, you know, basically we super insulated that place and, you know, we spent like $100,000 more on insulation. But it automatically paid for itself by the reduction in cost of the HVAC units. So we're real excited about that and hoping to see more buildings getting built to that standard because it pays for itself immediately. And so we're, we're looking to talk to builders about this, architects and things like that. So excited about that as well. And I guess the other, other thing I'd mention is I, I think we've got some interesting creative placemaking, which is like community-based art projects in the pipeline. And also there's some good stuff going on with heritage preservation of hopefully some sites in Athens County that we could turn into tourism projects or tourism sites. So hopefully that'll continue on as well. Thanks.
Thank you, Chris. Mayor Renner up in Chancy? Are you still with us?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Athens County Auditor's Office, Ben or Scott?
I'm not too much today. Just worked on settlement for tax distribution last week and got those checks out early this week. So everybody should be fat and happy off of that. Pretty much just business as usual. Waiting for the next tax, the next cycle of taxes to go out and start the process all over. Excited for summer to be here.
Yeah.
If it ever gets here, weather temperature, temperature-wise.
Ben, do you have a, a percentage of people that have paid on time their first tax billing? I mean, where does the county stand on that or do you look at that?
I don't have those numbers offhand, but I'm sure I could get something together.
Okay, I was just a, something that popped into my head when you were talking about that, you know, I wondered how many, if we're seeing a greater percentage with, having gone through this pandemic or is it about normal?
Yeah, I mean, that's definitely something I can look at and get back to you next time. Or I can send out an email if you want.
That'd be fine.
Yeah.
Next time would be fine even.
Okay.
Thanks, Ben.
Yeah, no problem.
Uh, Tim, Tim Waren, do you have anything to share this morning?
The only thing is, is hopefully it stops raining a little bit so we can catch up with the cemeteries. And in answer of Warren's question, our taxes was down slightly from last year. So there are probably a few more outstanding taxes than there was last year. So I don't know whether that means anything, but that's, that's where it was for us. But that's all I got today.
Thank you, Tim. Paul, is your wood?
Uh, nothing specific with the Athens County Broadband Advisory Committee meeting again this Friday. And we're going to be talking about trying to get some outreach around a couple of different programs. One is the FCC's Emergency Broadband Benefit Program. We're going to put in together a flyer and a press release about that. So that, that's a, that's a program that allows people who meet certain eligibility requirements to get a subsidy of $50 a month towards their broadband or internet bill, which we think will be very helpful for a lot of people in our area. And the other thing, of course, is as the House Bill 2 in the state legislature is on its way to the governor's desk, it's expected he'll sign that. And that will start the beginning of a state grant program that we can start working with ISPs in the area to get them addresses of places that we know need service. And they can apply for grant money from the state to actually fund the construction of fiber or whatever the technology we decide is necessary to bring them broadband connection. So that, that will hopefully be up and running in the next month or so, which is really good news because we can actually start to seeing some really, you know, positive changes happening in terms of broadband connection. We've been meeting with some ISPs in the area and, and all of them have indicated that they're willing to engage with that program very, very actively and, which is good, so to hear that. And yeah, that's, that's really all from us.
Thank you, Paul. Uh, Jason Morosco, do you have anything to share this morning? Thank you, Jason. Jessica Dine?
Good morning, Paul. I am working on a Transportation Improvement District grant application for Simpson Avenue and I thank the county for their support in that application. And also working on scoping a small cities grant application to be submitted in June. Those are my updates.
For the good of the order, is there anybody, any final comments or anything that we missed?
I wanted to, I wanted to mention that we're going to chip and seal Big Bailey, Big Bailey Run Road this summer too. We got that, an Eflap grant, Eastern, Eastern Federal Lands Grant two years ago. And we're working on those drawings too. So that'll be a double chip and seal. And we'll repair sections of that road before that happens. A lot of roads gravel, so we typically wouldn't do that. But in, but we applied for that grant because that money can only be used where you have federal lands, like the Wayne National Forest. And so we paved most of the roads that go through the forest. So we applied for and got that grant. It's a couple hundred thousand dollars we'll spend this summer out there.
Sounds a good job. Thank you.
Hey, Paul, the only thing that I forgot to mention is, you know, obviously the American Rescue Plan money. The guidance has been issued, you know, and all the villages and the county and the cities are, we're all getting that money. So it would be good, I think, for us to have some discussions about that at our next meeting. Just to see, you know, because I think the challenge is all the other money that's out there and what makes the most sense for our communities to focus on. So.
Chris, would you like us to add that as a, as an agenda item?
I, I think so. That'd be great.
Makes sense to start having some conversations about that, for sure. Anything else for the good of the order? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll submit.
Our next meeting is scheduled for, let me just double-check really quick. Thursday, June 10th at 8:00 AM. And we, I will follow up with everybody to kind of get out, get a feel for thoughts about meeting in person. And Commissioner Schmiehl, I'll touch base with you about availability for the EMS.